That is my cue from IT that is one o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. For Tuesday, April 2, 2024, attendance at the start of the meeting is 100% with Councillor Jolly and Councillor Broadhead attending virtually, everyone else is here in chambers. I need a motion to adopt the agenda, but as you heard, the motion for the agenda is going to be amended to add an in-camera land matter, 12.1, and then we'll have the Human Resources Annual Report as 12.2 and the CAO Dialogue as 12.3. So with that change, Councillor Mackay, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, perfectly fine.
Go ahead, as amended then, go ahead.
That the April 2, 2024 agenda be adopted as amended.
Awesome, call for the vote. voting is closed. That passes unanimously. We have three registered speakers on various topics today, and I see there's a lot of people in the audience today, which is nice to see. I'll just remind everyone that to keep it respectful, we will not allow any booing or cheering for anything because we want all opinions to be valued equally. So I will just go in order that people registered. Kevin, you were first, and then Dan Stoker, and then Anne-Marie Ready from Habitat. So that is the order. So Kevin, if you want to start making your way to the podium, everyone has five minutes to speak. But Kevin has been here before, he knows that, so. It's good seeing you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name's Kevin Asham, and I'm representing the Big Lake Environment Support Society to talk about bless objections to the removal of 56% of the forested wetlands as currently envisioned in the High Development Option Plan for Millennium Park. We'd like to acknowledge the absolutely incredible effort of Kira Fraser, whose efforts in bringing this issue to the attention of the public is laudable and who inspired Bless to get behind her petition effort. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, and a special thank you to all the councillors and the mayor who have taken or will be taking a great deal of time to meet with Kira and Bless over these last few weeks to review the issue in depth, and we really appreciate these conversations. We found them to be informative, productive, respectful, and cordial, and it was a great pleasure to get to know all of you personally. We do not envy the position that you are in. We've learned that it's an extremely difficult job that you do. And if anything, that's been our biggest takeaway from meeting with you all. Listening to others and becoming informed, no doubt, is the biggest part of your job. But we can imagine the most difficult part is making a decision in view of so much uncertainty, competing stakeholder objectives, and always under the constraints of funding. We understand these choices are not easy. Over the last months, we too have done a lot of listening. The thousands of signatures that have been gathered by Kira Fraser's petition are more than just signatures. They are the product of thousands of conversations and thousands of opinions. They represent much more than a simple number to achieve a legal requirement. They represent a strong and very broad community consensus spanning many different interests, perspectives, and opinions, but all united around Millennium Park. They come from people from all walks of life, from a variety of locations, from door-knocking to word-of-mouth, from standing around on trails in front of churches and at various meetings and other public gatherings. Mornings, afternoons, and evenings, we captured a broad swath of the St. Albert public. We were very pleased that the city offered a table for use in the lobby of City Hall to gather signatures, which was extremely helpful. Gestures like this speak volumes about the degree to which the city honors the democratic process. We found that the vast majority, well over 95%, of eligible people would sign the petition when approached. You know the issues via our conversations and the Bless commentary featured in last week's Gazette. Bless concerns about forested wetlands removal is a major issue, as was taking on of massive amounts of debt, not just for this project, but for all the other many priorities that council and the city has. A lack of collaborative planning and consultation was another concern for people, as was the uncertainty that continues as to what the plan for Millennium Park is and what changes may still occur. After meeting all of you and after all this tremendous effort, we believe there is ample opportunity for consensus and for there to be a great park that does meet majority needs. We believe the 2018 plan was a reasonable plan, and it protected the forested wetlands that Bless is concerned about. We urge council to make good decisions on our behalf that represents what we now know is the majority opinion of informed citizens, and we thank you all.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any questions for Kevin at this time? I think probably questions were probably put to you when people had one-on-one meetings, so I see no one putting their hand up now that you're good. Councillor Broadhead, you're good, okay. Next registered is Mr. Stoker, Dan, come on down. I feel like I'm on the prices right. Whenever you're ready.
Last night at the senior centre, I handed in 47 sheets of paper with 831 signatures, all personally witnessed. Madam Mayor, hard-working councillors, I am a messenger for those residents. I promise to share with you and what I have learned from them. Actually, I talked with over 1,000 people and ended up with 831 signatures. Did 150 refuse to sign? Absolutely not. I had no idea, as I stood at the Childers Bridge, that 20 to 25% of the people on the long Easter weekend were from away. They were from Edmonton, Spruce Grove, Westlock, Moretonville, Parkland County, Calgary, and even one from Newfoundland, enjoying a walk with her daughter. The daughter signed, the mother wanted to but could not. More than 150 could not. Surprise. Our residents proudly share the Sturgeon River and the Forest Line Walkways. They share them with others from away. And our neighbours from Edmonton and around come here without invitation. I don't think we really, truly understand how great we have it. We don't have to change anything to draw people from away. Did you know this? I was shocked. Has anyone surveyed the walkers, runners, and riders of the trails to see where they come from? People from away find something here they don't find where they live. Almost every conversation I had with these friends and strangers, you elude two types of comments, words of approval, yes, but also words of anger and dismay. They approved, they loved our trees and trails. But what about the dismay, the anger? I'm only a messenger, remember. The anger is for you. Despite your intentions, over 95% of the people, the ones in City Hall, the Curling Club, on the trails and in my own neighbourhood, nearly all are angry with you. There aren't two opposing groups, a left-leaning, a right-leaning, there's no debate. By far, the majority oppose what they consider is a grandiose vision. This is sad. It seems unfair. I feel for you. You're trying to do, so you are trying so hard to do the right thing, but you're not. You're failing. Why? The recurring question, why? Why are they doing this? Why diminish the forests? Why make the parking problem so much worse? Why so much debt? We already gave out our input, why throw out the plan of the stakeholders? Well, I honestly couldn't answer then. But I now have a theory. And maybe now is the time for you to consider shooting the messenger. My theory, it's just a theory. You have looked for a model. You didn't have to look far, no further than Edmonton, Horlick Park, a great park, a supermodel. Consciously or unconsciously, it has molded your vision. And why not? Such a park holds great events, like Heritage Days, outdoor concerts, athletic spectacles, and more. You saw what it has, a massive amphitheater, pavilion, concessions, picnic sites, playgrounds, a lake. When I list these amenities and more, I hear your voices, your excitement, your vision. Why not? It's a dream. Here's the thing. Horlick Park is 86 hectares in size. Millennium Park is four. Horlick Park has 800 or more parking places within its boundaries. Millennium Place has none. You can't fit a huge square peg in a small round hole. One more thing, in Millennium Park, the river is perfectly visible from the berm. In surprising contrast, in Horlick, in surprising contrast, in Horlick, pardon me. In Horlick Park, I'm getting choked up a bit, sorry. In Horlick Park, the north of Saskatchewan is usually unseen. One thing is for sure, they didn't cut down the trees to get a better view. It's not wrong to dream big, but in the last millennium, we learned bigger is not better. Living within your means has meaning. Debt is demeaning. Work what you've got with. Tweak the plan if you like, but adapt to the place we cherish. The High Development Option Plan is an affront to public involvement. Your plan has generated anger, cynicism, dismay, and distrust. If you wish to dismiss me, please do so, especially if I failed to deliver the message I was asked to deliver. You can, you must reassess. You have new information. The petition and the efforts of so many volunteers are a gift.
Mr. Stoker, your five minutes is up. I don't know if you have much more to wrap up with?
10 seconds.
Pardon?
10 seconds?
Sure, yeah, I'm good.
Please remember, the messenger is not your enemy, Madam Mayor. I admire your leadership, your drive, your commitment. You need not fail. You must not fail. We don't want you to fail. Show us you care. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes, you have a question? Go ahead, Councillor Hughes has a question.
Hi, sorry, Dan, right? Okay, hi, thanks for coming. So my understanding when you said this is that you did get thousands of signatures overall with the petition?
I did personally, I got 831.
But the petition got thousands?
Thousands. Didn't get 6,500, and maybe that's a blessing. Maybe that's a blessing to you. Because you're getting the message. When I say 95% of the people, well, Kevin said the same thing. When we talked to people and we told them what was going on, 95% or more, it could be more, I don't know. Would sign. That's a message. If this goes to a plebiscite and you lose that plebiscite, 95 to 5%, that's that's shame on you. That's a non-confidence vote. An honourable member of the council might quit because they don't have the support of the city, of the people. That's the gift this petition gives you. Yes, we didn't make 6,500, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is you also mentioned that, or the person before you mentioned, I'm just assuming you guys talk, because I don't see anyone else registered to speak related to this that I can see, that it made a difference when you guys came and just number placed together signatures, was that, is that correct?
They were grateful for it, yeah.
Yeah, it could made a difference to the overall numbers, I guess, is what I'm asking. Yes.
We didn't have, well, I don't know how many people we had out there, maybe 40, 50 volunteers, basically doing their own neighbourhoods, but soon as it hit Facebook and chat and that sort of thing, you needed to have a place for people to go.
Right.
We thought no better place than City Hall. This is where the people can speak. This is where we can receive the message from the people. So it was a great spot, and we thank you for having allowed us to be here.
Yeah, I know, I agree, the city manager was very gracious. Yeah, I agree, the city manager showed great leadership and was very gracious about the whole thing, absolutely. The question I have then also is just, if you fell short of the target, what would you credit the reason for why you fell short of the target? Was it the weather or, because I know you had the full 60 days? And I also know that Kira is younger and also is trying to manage full-time school or something of this nature. So obviously, like, it was an organizer that wasn't, didn't have like 24 hours a day to devote to this idea. So do we have an idea of why, if you had the 95% response rate that we could accredit to, why we didn't get the numbers?
It's a great, great question. I was asleep. I've been asleep for 10 years. I've been working out at Riverlet 56, I mean, I'm just one, I'm just one of many of the population here that's asleep. We don't watch you. We assume you're doing the right thing all the time. I spent all my time planting trees in Riverlet 56 for the last 10 years. I enjoyed that. I didn't know what Bless was doing. I didn't know what you were doing. All of a sudden, a young lady, 29 years of age, without any connections, but with a heart and a knowledge that something was amiss, decided to take on a petition, not knowing that 6,500 names is a difficult thing to do. So it wasn't until we went to the seniors, and it wasn't until Wes Broadhead forced me to talk, he acknowledged me in the audience as we were leaving, it was over, we were getting up to leave, remember. Mike was there. And Wes pointed me out, oh, we were on the Environmental Advisory Committee together. Well, I had sat there, and I haven't spoken for 10 years or more, and all of a sudden, I'm in front of a large crowd and Wes is picking me out and making me say something, and I'm a little hot already because I listened to Mike, who's been told that you've got trees that are valuable and low value and mid-value and high value and no value. I was a little hot, but I wasn't going to say anything until Wes pointed me out, said I used to be on the Environmental Advisory Board, which when I was there, I felt like a rubber stamp. We never had a chance to really tell council anything. Now I hear finally, they have told you that maybe you've made a mistake here, and they aren't a rubber stamp.
So if I, I'm just going to try to digest what you said. So if I was to paraphrase, would it be because you had 60 days, or Kira had 60 days, she started, but that it really didn't get going until the second part of it, so that it was only 30 days that was really active? Because I'm guessing maybe partly the weather and then just partly just awareness from the population, is that what you would say would be a fair?
It wasn't until that seniors' gathering.
And that was in March.
March the what, 8th?
6th, yeah, March 6th.
So like less than a month ago is when it actually started to really launch?
It still took me a week before I knew exactly how to get involved, and all of a sudden, yeah, I've got some connections. I'm not a great guy for connections, but man, you can hit a lot of people quickly with emails and find people that are willing to walk the streets, especially when you're talking about Millennium Park
Right.
and our trail system.
Okay.
These beloved parts of our city that make it special. People, there are people out there that will defend these things. And with or without a petition, you're going to have to fight this one at some point, because we were going to wake up. I'm really sure, even without Kira. I mean, God, if that ever gets to that point, you should be sad too, that we've fallen asleep, we don't care anymore what you do, or we don't believe in you anymore. There are so many cynics out there that don't like what goes on here. I'm sorry, I'm telling you the truth. I am the messenger. Don't kill me. I'm not the problem. I'm just conveying what I've heard.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted, so it's really because it took a while before public awareness reached the point where you had enough volunteers to really make it happen, is what I'm hearing, and I'm seeing Kira not.
The best one to answer your question.
Okay, that was all, I was just trying to figure that out, so thank you.
Councillor Keel also has a question, if you have more time. Councillor Keel, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Dan, good to see you again, and, you know, really appreciate your passion and energy, obviously. We have woken you up, and that's good, so we're always pleased to have any resident come and talk to us at any time in council. And I recognize too that the guidance and help and energy of Bless and Kira and everybody, you know, you're representing that as the messenger here today. So, simple question, Dan. From your position and passion, Bless indicated that they like the old 2018 plan. Would you say that you share that, and did you hear that from residents that you were talking to over the last couple of weeks?
We showed them three pictures, the way it is now, the 2018 plan, and the way it was proposed. And the fallback position would definitely be to the 2018. You had the stakeholder input, you had public input, that's what we think you want. That's what we thought our democratic process in St. Albert was. So yes, that is a fallback. I heard that it's a $16 million project even there, that is mind-blowing to me, and it's very disappointing to a lot of the people that we talk to. There's two major things that people don't like. There's really four good things, but two major ones. The two major ones are nature and the environment. And it might even be second to the other one, which is the cost. The people that hate this idea of debt, 20, you know, it may all get spent, but that's what you're asking for, 20.8 million dollars of debt. Now, I know you deal in big figures. They seem extremely big to those of us who don't maybe deal with them every day. And that is, that is probably the biggest, parking, and the fact that you have diverted process and ignored the input we've already given you. Those are the four, four major things.
Thank you for that answer, Dan, and again, I appreciate you coming in and talking to council today.
All right, Dan, I see no more questions, so thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
And last, we have Anne-Marie Ready, President and CEO of Habitat for Humanity. Thanks for waiting, Anne-Marie, and welcome back.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for having me back again. I sincerely appreciate everyone's time today. So last time I was here at council was really part of an education of sort of talking about some of the changes that were happening at Habitat, but also to put in a call for how we build in communities of today. And it's certainly changed over the years, and I just wanted to basically give more of an update on that piece of it. This slide was in the last slide, and this is basically how Habitat works. It's really, we bring together communities, and that community today includes developers, builders, municipalities in terms of supporting affordable home ownership in the communities in which we live and serve. And we build through a variety of different ways. Sometimes we get actual donations, there are grants, grants from the government of Alberta, from the federal government, through CMHC's seed funding, and that's through our Habitat Canada branch. And then also, the skilled labour comes from us right now when we have developers or really builders, where they look to their trades to give a portion of their time and effort to give back to a Habitat build. And then that shows up when a builder is actually giving us a build at below market price. And this is how we basically work to create homeownership in communities. And so those are really the two pieces that I want to talk to today. So when we think about homeownership in a community, it really is, is that when we're looking at creating homeownership opportunities, it's not just for one family in one point in time. Our buyback program and right of first refusal that we have in our mortgage documentation is there to ensure that these homes remain in a community and that variety and numerous families actually go through a home. So historically, if you look at what we've built in St. Albert, we've built 35 homes, and to date, it's been 77 families that have gone through. And so it's all about creating sustainable inventory to ensure that affordable homeownership remains in a community. And unlike affordable housing that is more around rentals, homeownership is, in essence, contributing back to a community because these homeowners are taxpayers. Most of the homeowners are individuals that work in the community, because our homeownership program is very targeted to working individuals that are not making the 150 or $100,000 incomes, but are making those 45 to 75 and $80,000 incomes. So these homeowners work, they give back to their community. Our recent survey showed of our existing Habitat homeowners that they actually do give back to their communities by volunteering quite a bit and working in the communities in which they live. So I wanted to provide a bit of a comparison. When we talk about Aberton Homes in Midtown, which we're currently looking at with Aberton, we've been in discussions with this builder and developer for over a year now, probably even two years when we were first introduced to Aberton through the city of St. Albert. But it's just to give you an example of how and what makes the Habitat Homeownership Program affordable. There were concerns, and people look at Aberton and say, that's not really what Habitat Homeownership should look like. And I would say that we disagree within Habitat. Pride of ownership is one of the biggest successes of our program. And we want homes that people feel a sense of pride in their community. We want individuals that actually are living in a home that you can walk down the street and you don't know that they're a Habitat homeowner than any other. And we want homes that are built of a really high standard and quality, because we want these homes to last. And so when you look at what it is, the other thing is, it's the program itself that makes it affordable. And so when you look at the numbers here, when we say a market value or a market home price of 450, and that includes GST of what these homes would sell probably when Aberton puts them up for sale, ours are based on appraised value, and that appraised value is what keeps those homes affordable. And as you can see with the program, because it's only 50% of whatever that appraised value is, that's the affordability factor. condo fees and taxes are paid by the homeowner, but this is where the true piece of the secret sauce lies, is the mortgage model itself.
Anne-Marie, you have about 30 seconds, and I have a feeling you have a specific ask, so I'm going to get it and maybe get to that.
So that one would be this one here. And that is where we need St. Albert, the council's support for a grant of some form that allows us to purchase the land in which these homes are going to build on. We currently know they're sitting at roughly 110,000 per unit. That puts an ask of about 440,000 by way of a grant. But obviously, any amount that council can provide for this particular build would be extremely helpful. Thank you, Mayor.
I think the first thing, Anne-Marie, is can we get a copy of this presentation? Because I think the numbers are in there. I mean, obviously, we're not going to approve a half a million dollars today in council, that's just not going to happen. It's the first time we've seen it. When we amended the agenda at the beginning of this meeting, it was so we could have a conversation about your request, because we had a heads-up. So if you could, please, be my first question to you, is send us these numbers so we can crunch them, and I believe you have a deadline.
I do.
Which is?
May 1st.
Okay.
And that is only from the government of Alberta. In the past, our grants that we would receive, we've always gotten an extension on our bill timelines. This grant, we do not. They've given us till May 1st, Mayor, so thank you for that question.
Yeah, okay. Is there any questions from members of council? Could you put up your hand? Go ahead, Councillor Hughes.
Hi, thank you for coming. Okay, so a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the, I'm just doing math. I'm trying to make sense of the math right now. So to understand, so you're saying that the current mortgage would be $1,100 or 1185, and then a typical mortgage would be 2,500, so more than double is what we're saying. And then you said it's based on appraised value, and I'm just trying to understand, so they're not buying the house at market value?
They are not buying. It's part of our CRA requirement that when we put homes on the market for sale, they have to be at the appraised value. It's not market value, and market value is based on what people are willing to pay, which is sometimes you get individuals that overpay for a home, or you get bidding wars. That ensures that the homes that are in the Habitat program remain at the appraised value. So think of it, if you've ever refinanced your home with the financial institution, and they refinance your home, and they give you a value on your home, and you say, but I could sell it for 60,000 or 70,000 more. Yes, on the market, you could, but an appraised value- Yes, on the market you could, but an appraised value is not the same as a market value. And ours is always on the appraised.
Okay. When I do the math, that's basically they're buying it at two hundred thousand. So you're saying you're going to be selling them a home worth five hundred thousand at appraised value of two hundred thousand?
No, the appraised value that we've already looked at, if I was to go back. So the appraised value of these homes are roughly going to be about four hundred and thirty five thousand.
And you're doing this in a thirty year term?
And it would be over a thirty year mortgage through Habitat's program. Residential mortgages are usually only twenty five. Our agreement with Service Credit Union is we amortize it over thirty. And it's at fifty percent of the appraised value is the mortgage dollar amount.
Okay, so one more time. So fifty percent of the appraised value?
Of the appraised value.
That is the mortgage?
That is the mortgage that the, the Habitat homeowner would carry.
Okay, cause when I look at two hundred thousand at five point one nine over thirty years, it does total a thousand and ninety a month. So their mortgage amount is two hundred grand and they're buying it in theory for four hundred thousand. So, and I'm also looking at your numbers that your turnover is basically every, probably about eight to nine years, you're turning over everybody again. So at the nine year mark when they leave, how much equity would they expect to have in their home?
They should, when we're modeling it out, basically, if we are looking at an individual that has, that's been in the home between that seven to eight years. They could probably have enough equity to go and put a ten to fifteen percent down.
So how much would that be?
Well, it, it really depends, Counselor, because when we enter into a program with a homeowner. Not only will they actually build up their own equity, but they'll work with their, with Service Credit Union to increase their payments as their income. To pay down their home faster. We're not tracking that equity anymore. Plus they get access to the appreciation of the home, which is something we've never offered in the past.
So the two hundred thousand that they're not paying, because it's, they're only paying half of the mortgage. So it's almost like you're putting down the other half.
We are, and we hold that on an amortization of twenty five years, zero percent interest and no payment.
And, and that is, I'm just trying to figure out though, when the property is sold. They're, they're selling it back to you at the original purchase price? And that two hundred thousand that you're holding goes, what happens to that and the interest?
No, so when the home is now sold back to us, it's sold back to us at the appraised value.
Okay.
So if the home has gone up in value. They get access to that appreciation.
And I'm assuming fifty percent of that appreciation.
Exactly, exactly. And so they get the appreciation plus whatever equity of the mortgage that they pay down at Service Credit Union.
Right.
And then when we sell the home, we basically then are, we're selling the home at the new appraised value. And again, we're carrying another fifty percent of the new appraised value. And then taking that money from the new homeowner and paying off the mortgage at, the, the remaining mortgage at Service Credit Union.
So who is paying your half? How are you getting the money for your half?
How we are getting through, um, that piece of it is what we, this is why these homes, when we're building them. We're trying to get to a net zero. Where we're not paying that the home is built at zero cost to Habitat that allows us to carry the fifty percent mortgage.
Okay, I think I understand. How this is working. Okay, so I guess it, let's say they did not pay any additional. They just made the minimum. They made the, they made the mortgage payments like many people do. Even at sixty thousand a year, you don't have a lot of extra money left over if you have a family. So if you just made the basic payments after nine years, how much would be expected to have an equity? Like seven thousand or eight thousand in equity or?
I'll work the numbers on that and get it to council. When I send the presentation, I'll do it. You have to remember too, that one of the beautiful things about these models is there's no mortgage default insurance. There's no down payment and there's no GST, right? So when a homeowner is actually starting to make a payment. If you think about it, somebody buys a home at five percent down, that's almost brought right back up to a hundred percent of whatever the mortgage value is again. To ensure that, because all that gets added back in. The other thing too, is I did some research just here in Sherwood Park on sort of what people are paying in rent. And when you're paying rent, you're not building anything, zero. At least with Habitat's Home Ownership Program, all of our modeling that we've done on previous. And I haven't done it on this one, but in previous is that we know within that seven to nine years, they've got anywhere from ten to fifteen percent down. When they go in, into the open market for a down payment. They're staying in at about that eleven year mark, then they're getting closer to the twenty five percent down. But when I did the research and did a quick search, Park Centre Place for the same square footage of a three bedroom. Is anywhere from twenty four to twenty seven hundred dollars in rent.
So are there any parameters for the person or the family to apply? Like with this, what you're asking us for here, is it just basically anyone who lives in St. Albert? Who would be eligible for these homes that you're trying, that we're looking at to build or is there any specifics?
These homes, we are looking, specifically looking for black families in these particular homes. From a black families, uh, initiative that we're trying to basically expand black homeownership. In a lot of communities that don't have a lot of, of black families purchasing homeownership.
So at any point, at any time, could a white family own one of these four homes?
For these four homes, no, not until the grant runs out, the ten year grant.
So at the end of the ten years, there's the potential?
Goes back into the pool.
But if you were like Latino or Chinese or anything else, also not eligible Filipino?
Unless the individual self identifies as black.
I see. Okay. And that is also why there's the deadline of the May first is for this program?
It is this specific program.
Okay, thank you.
So, sorry, um, is it the, the provincial grant, that their program that is specifying that we're trying to?
Federal, the federal program.
So it's federal, okay, sorry.
This one is federal and provincial.
Correct.
Money is also in it.
All right, I saw Counselor Jolly. So, oh, Counselor Jolly, do you have a question? Your hand was up.
You know, I, I did, but you know, without details and, and a formal kind of paper ask, I, I don't think that would be valuable.
Okay, yeah, so I think we, what we need is, is this kind of package to send.
Yeah, but before I send the presentation, Council, I'll give you the information on what the actual equity would look like in this.
Uh, Counselor Bermansky has a question.
Thank you, Anne Marie, for presenting to us again. Uh, last time you were here and spoke with, uh, council, you were mentioning that. Habitat for Humanity, particularly your branch of it, was going to work on more, you know, one home at a time. So I don't know why it's changed now where you want to jump into four, all at the five point one nine interest rate. Can you clarify that, please?
Well, in terms of, it's in terms of what we're not building anymore is any more massive complexes. We're looking at duplexes, single fam- well, not even duplex, single family homes are just too expensive right now. But in terms of duplexes and row housing. And so it comes down to availability and in terms of also, um, in. It, like when, what we have in terms of grants. Because this particular grant, there's no extension. We have a, an opportunity here to have close to two hundred and twenty five thousand per door. And once this grant goes, we have nothing. We actually, I actually have zero to go towards any bills in the future. Until both the federal and, uh, provincial government come forward with specific. Um, grants for how, for homeownership, a lot in the affordable housing space, but not for homeownership. The five point one nine, that's the rate that we have right now. That's just the rate that's kind of out there. But we often some, we're getting better rates at Service Credit Union. But again, this is just an example. It's not a, it's the, the numbers in terms of what a five point one nine interest rate would look like. I don't know necessarily that we're going to get back to the two percent interest rates again. In my thirty five years in the financial industry, that was an unbelievable time. So a five, to me, in, in my experience, five percent is still an extremely, uh, good interest rate. For an individual.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
And that's all the questions I have for now. So, yeah, we'll, uh, obviously receive your. Presentation and formal request and get back to you before May first.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, Council, um, next on our agenda is business arising. I've already added a conversation about Habitat to the agenda. Is there anything else? Then we will move on to consent, which Counselor Hughes told me ahead of time, she could not wait to put this motion on the floor.
Okay, that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and seven point four, extension financial statement reporting deadline.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. So six point one was just approved on consent, uh, and now we are on to Alberta Health Services. Provision of EMS, a time extension, but we do have, uh, Everett and Everett Cook here to take us through this. Unless you had anything to open it up.
Uh, no, I don't.
You're good?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cook, do you have a bit of a presentation?
I, I do, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Um, take only just a few moments and then of course be happy to answer any questions that council may have. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of councils. A pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. As you're aware, the city of St. Albert has delivered pre-hospital care to our residents since nineteen seventy seven. Then in two thousand and nine, when Alberta Health Services assumed this responsibility across our province. St. Albert entered into what would be our first contract with Alberta Health Services, allowing the city to continue providing such services. St. Albert signed a second contract in twenty fourteen and since then, we have agreed to multiple contract extensions addressing lapses in contractual timelines. While ensuring local service delivery to residents is maintained. Most recent contract extension expired on Sunday, March thirty first. Since the second quarter of twenty twenty three, administration has engaged in contract discussions with Alberta Health Services and representatives from Alberta Health. St. Albert is one of seven integrated fire services having such discussions. Negotiations have been lengthy, resulting in countless hours of dedicated time and the focused attention of staff from city departments, including. Finance and strat services, human resources and safety, legal legislative and record services and fire services. I also want to note that as required, members of St. Albert's executive leadership team have engaged when and as necessary. Although we may be close, we are not yet prepared to bring forward to council a request to sign a new agreement with AHS. And because of this, we are seeking your support in providing the C A, CAO authorization to sign a forty five day bridging agreement. Between the city of St. Albert and Alberta Health Services. This is for the provision of ground ambulance services. Signing this forty five day bridging agreement will provide all parties more opportunity to finalize a new agreement. With the goal of allowing the city of St. Albert to continue providing pre-hospital care to our residents. Should the decision be made not to enter into a bridging agreement with AHS. We would then be contractually mandated into a transition period of one hundred and eighty days, allowing AHS to put into place. A service model deemed appropriate for our community. Thank you, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You might not be able to answer this question, Mr. Cook. But it's a hundred and eighty days. Sufficient time for AHS to provide ambulance service in St. Albert.
In a previous discussion with Alberta Health Services, the question, uh, a question of that nature came up. The discussion led to AHS needing to make a determination between direct delivery. So through Alberta Health Services resources or through another contract provider. Um, it's the best I can offer you on that question at this time.
And it's, it's more a question for them, not you, but just, but you might answer. Ca- Counselor Hughes has a question.
Just a couple of quick ones. So, uh, just so for clarity, does the forty five days start April first or start today? Just out of curiosity, cause we are signing it.
That would be April first.
April first, okay. And the other question is, why did we choose forty five days? We've been giving other extensions, um, of a longer nature, I guess. And so forty five is, in government world, that's fast. So.
Uh, that's a, that's a great point, Counselor Hughes. Uh, as a matter of fact, the original request from Alberta Health Services was for thirty days. However, understanding that more time was needed, not only to, to have this further discussions with Alberta Health Services. But, uh, more time would be needed to get back in front of council within. Uh, scheduled meetings, uh, to present back to council options for moving forward.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm asking is, do you actually need more, do you want a longer timeline anyways? Cause we say up to, and you're like, no, we're good. You're confident on the forty five?
Yeah, i- i- if I may, I, I think a longer timeline just provides more flex space to draw out the negotiations.
All right.
We're comfortable with the forty five days.
This is it. We're going in. Okay, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if the AHS reorg is impacting kind of. The ability to, to negotiate this. I know, I, I assume this is going to be under acute care. Um, but I, I think, you know, when I, when I talk to the folks at AHS, they don't even know who's in charge of what in, in some cases.
Um, yeah, thank you, Counselor. I'll defer, I'll let Chief Cook, um, add to this. But, but yes, that it has, is having an implication, um, which is why Alberta Health has recently come to the table, um, to start, um. Essentially setting the conditions for future success. I won't go into the details of the contract, but certainly, uh, in camera, I can talk about the specifics. As it relates to our contract with St. Albert, I'm, I'm loathe to talk about the specifics of the contract in public. Uh, but it's had a material impact, certainly on, um, elements of the contract and obviously the, the, the future in the way ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And from myself, there, I really have nothing further to add, uh, as CAO, um, Fletcher has pointed out, um. We're currently in a position where we're looking forward to further negotiations with Alberta Health Services. And any other dialogue around that content we should, should be in camera for.
All right, so. There is council motion if we wanted to go on camera, but I feel like you guys need to. Continue down the negotiations road before we really have a conversation and see if there are any. Decisions that council would need to make, whether it's service levels or. Dollar figures, et cetera. That's when we would be asked to, uh, make enough. But at this, but this point in time, we're not being asked anything along those lines, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so as, uh, most time extensions is probably could have been on consent. But, um, it is, you looking to make a motion, Counselor Killig?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm ready to make a recommended motion.
Okay, go ahead.
That, uh, the CAO be authorized to execute a bridging agreement for up to forty five days between the city of St. Albert. And Alberta Health Services for the provision of EMS ground ambulance services on terms and conditions acceptable to the CAO.
All right, any opening comments, Counselor Killig?
I think this, uh, is pretty straightforward. We've clarified that the forty five days is what people, uh, both parties seem reasonable. So this should, uh, give us, hopefully, the time to negotiate a good deal.
All right, I see no one else with their hand up, so I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes my majority. Unanimously, thank you. Well, that's majority. Uh, next on our motion, or on agenda seven point two, which is, uh, the motion. That I need to, uh, file nomination papers for the FCM board, Counselor Mackay. Had Will, said he was going to put this for, um. Counselor Bermansky, you pulled it off. You had questions?
I do, yes.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I, I suppose the questions would be for you directly.
Sure.
Um, okay, um, how many people do you have any idea at this time would be running for that seat? Is there a space for new voices in FCM?
So Alberta has. Seven representatives, the president of Alberta municipalities, the president of the rural municipalities, one from Edmonton, one from Calgary. Um, and three at large. And the three at large, there are two urban and one rural seat. Currently, um, the two urban seats are filled with Counselor Katie Bergoffer from South Kona and Mark, Mike Yargo from Penfold. Um, I'm not going to speak to their intentions of whether they're running or what they're planning to do, so I'm not sure.
Okay, and, um, the other comment that I, you know, I, I kind of want to make in relation to the, um. You know, the question as well is with, um, you know, you have Alberta municipalities, you have EMRB, you have all other groups. And a lot of those groups in doing research, many of them are the same people sitting on all those groups, including the FCM now. So, um, sometimes I see a, a one dimensional view. Or, um, or a matter of facts, sometimes that, uh, all people.
Before, is this a question or do you want to save this for debate?
Okay, the, the question is, how do you silo what is best for St. Albert without. Having all of those other boards in the back of your mind? That's the question.
How do I what? How do I?
Silo what's best for St. Albert alone without referring, when you're sitting on so many boards. Again, the representation for, uh, for any board should be strictly for St. Albert. How do you silo that you focus on that?
I think everything I do, whether it's Alberta municipalities, Alberta recycling, or this one, uh, cause I have sat on this board before. Is ultimately for St. Albert. or this one, uh, because I have sat on this board before, is ultimately for St. Albert. Right now, the biggest priority for FCM is a restructuring, they're writing a a paper called the municipal growth finance reform. It's about getting more money into St. Albert. I'm advocating for doubling of the gas tax. I'm advocating for more transit money and more housing dollars. And programs that will support those, all of those are St. Albert issues.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Hughes?
Just a couple of questions, Mayor. Um, is this the same board that you were on before, or is this a different board? Because you were, you were on one with FCM, right? Just then you, it's coming to a close.
So, the president of Alberta municipalities automatically sits on the board of FCM, so for two years and sat there.
Right, so is it the same one?
This is FCM, yeah.
Okay.
And then when I left Alberta municipalities, I still had committee responsibilities.
Yeah.
So you guys passed a motion, so I could sit on committees. This is the board, different, slightly different.
This is the board?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then does the board have subcommittees as well, or is it just the board?
Every board member sits on committees, yeah.
So how many meetings or like?
It's the same number of meetings. They meet four times a year, the committees and the board all meet at the same time in the same location.
Oh, okay, so there's not, so it's all together at one, okay, that makes.
And they've moved most of it to virtual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that helps. The other, the other question I had was the council contingency, this might be to the administration. So it says ten thousand for the council contingency out of the fifteen, so I'm assuming it's going to be like seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred? I'm looking at you, Diane, because you're just my money Roman before.
Actually, if it's our, uh, and the board director of finance, I'll ask different.
Or five, five, sure.
It's just habit, go to you, Diane, that's all.
Yeah.
Councillor Hughes, um, the, the full, like, the full amount would go from the council contingency.
So, I guess, because we, we approved ten thousand before, but like, what I'm wondering is if that's the right funding source, or if it, we could, or how much of the council contingency do we tend to use up in a year, is what I'm, I'm wondering, because two-thirds of it would be for this one item, and I'm thinking we also have like, I don't know if the council's barbecue in the park or something is also comes into that or anything else. Um, and I know we have used other things, so I'm just wondering if this is the right funding source for that, or if it limits us for options.
We had recommended it as a funding source because we've used it for other boards too, for Council Broadhead in the past, so that's why we'd use in leaves five thousand. If it were, if their balance was ever left at zero, then we could always have stabilization for those one time, if there was additional items that council wanted to fund. One.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
All right, I see no more questions, I'll go to you, Councillor Mackay.
Do I have to read in all the whereas?
No, just the resolution, unless you want to.
I, I.
I did give you a four o'clock deadline for today, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying, uh, the recommended motions is, uh, the following Federation of Canadian Municipalities, uh, FCM resolution before the D F C N, and there's one, two, three whereas's, and two be it resolves.
Just read the be it resolved.
Uh, that council of city of St. Albert endorsed Mayor Heron to stand for election on FCM's Board of Directors for the period starting in June two thousand twenty-four and ending in June two thousand twenty-five, and be it further resolved that council assumes all costs associated with Mayor Heron attending FCM's Board of Directors median, meetings, pardon me, and that up to ten thousand be approved from the council contingency fund to fund costs associated with Mayor Heron attending FCM's Board of Directors meetings from June twenty twenty-four until June twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, any opening comments?
Yeah, I think the questions were very, uh, good, and I think your responses to them actually, um, indicates to me your value in relation to being there. As you've identified, there are seven spots in Alberta, uh, and out of that seven spots, there's really nobody that represents mid-city mayor. And I think that that's one of the gaps that, uh, this current board is missing, um, since you had to pull back from your Alberta municipalities role, uh, and that you were able to carry forward successfully. I mean, the Alberta municipalities, or pardon me, the Federation of Canadian municipalities represents almost ninety-two percent of all Canadian municipalities. Um, they've starting to have a bigger, um, force at a number of, uh, policies that impact our community and other communities all across Canada, and you've identified some of the big ones, obviously transportation dollars, but for us, affordability houses, affordability of housing, sorry. Uh, we just heard a presentation from Habitat for Humanity, and we all know that we're waiting for potentially some provincial dollars as it relates to our own affordable housing project. And I, I just, I just feel strongly that, um, having your voice uh, and, and recognizing that you still have to be elected to the board, this just gets you at the starting gate. And, uh, um, but you're, if you were successful and if you were, uh, elected, you would be a strong voice, uh, for mid-city mayors and some of our issues and concerns, uh, brought to the table, so.
Thank you. See no more hands up. Uh, you mentioned mid-sized cities. FCM considers any municipality under a hundred thousand people rural. That's something I would like to change, that there is a represent, and I've been working with Carol Saab at, um, at FCM, she's the executive director, about trying to find some set of mid-sized city caucus group just to, so those urbans under a hundred thousand would have a voice. And, um, I'm also really trying to start a summit or some sort of gathering of municipal affairs ministers across the province or across the country, because that never happens, the municipal affairs ministers never sit together. Treasury does, uh, uh, many other, uh, ministries do, but the municipalities are quite often forgotten. Because municipalities in different provinces do things very differently. Saskatchewan gets a sale, a piece of the sales tax. Some of them don't pay nearly the same education property taxes that we do. So I have a feeling that if we can be successful with that, we might be able to take some of those best practices across province, across country, sorry, and benefit Alberta, which would benefit St. Albert, so. Couple of things I'm working on with FCM right now. Anything to close, Councillor Mackay?
No.
You're good?
Thank you.
Thanks, call for the vote? Voting's closed. And that, uh, passes with by majority with Councillor Promansky opposed, and now we are on to seven point three with the Snowflake Festival. Um, go ahead. Councillor Killig, because you're the one who pulled this off of consent, you had a couple of questions?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you want to go right in questions or motion first?
Let's just get the questions out of the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. So just a couple of things on the funding. First, first off, we initially, as the motion stood, um, when it was tied to the Business Improvement District, we had specifically said ten thousand dollars for three years to support the Snowflake Festival. We have now communicated, I believe, to Kinsman, and this is where the question will come to confirm that they would now have to apply, uh, to the community event grant um, process, and would they be allowed to still receive the ten thousand for the, for the next three years? The current policy says, um, normally a five thousand dollar maximum and also says, uh, well, we, we don't do your three-year funding, we do two-year, multi-year funding within that policy. So I just want to make sure that, um, we haven't misled, um, through miscommunication of where this started at three years at ten thousand each to where we are now, saying you have to follow the, the policy. So I just want to make sure that we're absolutely clear how we are supporting the Snowflake Festival financially, uh, I having worked on it and worked with the city from an operational perspective, it's awesome what we do to support it, so I, I will say that as well, but I'm more, um, also having worked through it, I know we spent nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, and, uh, I, therefore, I want to make sure the financial aspects of supporting this are, are crystal clear. If, uh, if that could be addressed, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I'll, I'll defer to, uh, to Danielle, but maybe I'll just offer an injected comment. Obviously, the current motion as it sits, uh, none of that money is destined for use by, um, Kinsman or anyone, right, it is specific to the B I A, which is why this motion has come forward, uh, because the B I A at this point in time, to the best of our knowledge, would not leverage those funds specific to the Snowflake Festival. And if they don't use them, no one else can, the way it's currently written. Um, the second component, um, obviously, is if you recall, I'll just make reminder that council amended the events grant policy to allow multiple applications in the same year, um, and that was specifically so, um, that, uh, Rainmaker Rodeo and any support, uh, for, for the Snowflake could occur as well. Uh, and so perhaps I'll stop there, just from a contextual piece and ask Danielle to speak to the specifics of your question, councillor.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Fletcher, and through the Chair to Councillor Killig, um, you are correct, they would apply annually for this funding at this time. Should they want to apply as a recurring grant application? So if you're familiar within the, uh, the community events grant, they can apply as an ad hoc, which means they apply annually, or they could apply as a recurring, which means they would apply and get up to two-year funding. We would confirm, CSAC would then approve up to two-year funding. The window for them to apply, though, is next year, so then they could apply in two thousand twenty-five for two-year funding for their, for their grant project, for the Snowflake Festival. Um, but right now, they would apply for this singular year only.
And what about the maximum dollar amount?
Mm-hmm, so the maximum dollar amount is not guided by policy, it's more of a guideline of CSAC that they look at about five thousand dollars, but I understand that CSAC has been exploring providing additional funding or more than that funding, um, in alignment with the requests that they're getting. And currently, we are, um, waiting for our grant to close on April fourth, so it closes this week, so we have very few applications, I would say, in at this time. So it seems like there's some good opportunity for Kinsman to leverage Snowflake Festival. Again, that's not my decision, that is the decision of the Community Services Advisory Committee, but there, um, seems to be good opportunity for them to apply for the funding for the Snowflake Festival within this grant year.
Uh, recognized, thank you. Um, recognizing that I sit as a member on CSAC, I'm somewhat familiar with that. Um, but just to confirm my understanding, the budget is like seventy-seven thousand roughly, and the highest year we've ever had was fifty thousand, something like that. So there is definitely room to accommodate this and, um, but it, it, does that sound about right, Danielle?
Yeah, through the Chair to Councillor Killig, that does sound about right in terms of they, this year we have seventy-seven thousand dollars allocated to community of grant, events grant funding. I would say typically, especially post-pandemic, we have not allocated all of those funds, and there has been some, um, ability within that funding to, um, support other events. Um, there is another close date too in September, if groups do come up with other opportunities, and there's unallocated funds for them to apply further. And now, as, as Mr. Fletcher did remind, um, um, council that we, they did make a change to the program, um, to allow groups to apply for more than one event per year, so there is opportunity certainly to apply within that.
And just, uh, final question then, so, uh, ha- has the Kinsman been communicated of all the things we've just, just, and it's good news, don't, I just really want to be crystal clear. So have, have they also been sent their, their notification for their, um, ground of grant funding, which we normally send out? Uh, notifying the organizations, kind of giving them a heads up that the granting program is open and they should send in their requests of has that been done to give them the heads up?
Yeah, through the Chair to Councillor Killig, we did communicate with the Kinsman directly on this one, so we have staff that are liaison to them, um, for their event logistics, and we also have staff that are available and supportive of them from a grant perspective, and our staff from the granting have been in contact with them. Um, we can double confirm that we will communicate again, just to make sure our, their requirements are clear, but we have been in contact with them multiple times, um, since they've declared their interest in hosting the event moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm, I'm fully supportive of them going through the formal granting process and accounting for it and sending a report back. I'm absolutely one hundred percent, you know, for following the rules. Um, so this is, uh, this is good news, and I, I just wanted to make sure that all parties were on the, the same page in that regard, so.
Appreciate that. So, oh, Councillor Hughes, do you want to make the motion?
I do, I actually want to put forward a different motion, which I just emailed to you guys.
What's your motion?
Which is that we transfer it from the Business Improvement Area to the Kinsman for the same amount of money for the same years.
Could you read it?
Sure.
Yeah.
That notwithstanding PM twenty-four dash zero six, that ten thousand dollars is transferred for the Business Improvement Area to the Kinsman Association in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six to support the Snowflake Festival.
All right, before I accept that, that's quite different, does anyone have any questions on that?
Ma'am?
Yeah, councillor, so your little yellow hand is kind of like in the corner, and I can barely see it, but there we go, go ahead.
This is materially different, I mean, certainly, I mean, do you have to accept this motion, or can we do the normal, known, a known as a motion? I mean, I don't have any background information on this.
We might have to, we'll, we'll see, I might have to look at staff too, but it is quite different, Councillor Broadhead? I think you're muted.
Sorry, yes, same question, in a sense, it is different, and I'm just wondering what it does, uh, in precedent-wise in terms of I, I, I understand they need the money, uh, the question is, as I understand it, they've been given the opportunity to, uh, to apply twice, uh, for the business and, uh, so, I'm not sure where this goes now, personally.
So you're thinking it's sending precedent, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You know.
Councillor, can I maybe, maybe suggest to you, Councillor Hughes, that somebody else make the staff recommended motion, and then you amend it, and we'll see where that goes, and if it fails, then we go back to the original?
Yeah, it's your choice, sure.
Do you want to do it that way?
Sure.
You're fine with that? Um, Councillor Killig, you had, when I first called on you, I thought you were ready to make the motion. Okay, I'll let you make the original, and then we'll take an amending motion.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, that notwithstanding PM twenty-four dash oh six, ten thousand not be out, not be provided to the Business Improvement Area in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six to support the Snowflake Festival.
Okay, all right.
And then we can use my amended motion?
And then we'll have it amended, which I'm just saying, we should probably avoid the use of not in emotion, negative motions, but.
Okay, so can we just say that it's amended to read the following, just to make?
Okay, hold on, Marta, you wanted to jump in?
Yes, so if I could, um, I just took a look at the email, and so we're not technically transferring money from the B I A to the Kinsman because we haven't given the money to the B I A. So there's nothing to transfer, so instead, I would suggest that we, um, amend the main motion, like, Councillor Hughes, if you would like to amend the main motion that's on the floor right now, you can amend it by adding to the end of the current motion that instead the funds be provided to the Kinsman Association.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that up on the screen.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good catch, Marta.
Oh, yeah, if we have questions, absolutely, Councillor Mackay, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, just clarification question, and in relation to the fact that we approved, um, funding to the Business Improvement Area, recognizing that they weren't going to already look after the Snowflake Festival, so they were already going to be down ten thousand, does this impact their initial funds that have already been proved to go to B I A, just my clarification?
No, it does not. So they will match, um, right, this current year, when it comes for the twenty-five thousand dollars matched by the city for their total budget will remain untouched.
So this is just to provide clarity as to the ten thousand, so it goes directly to the Kinsman, so that they don't have to apply to the Community Service.
That's the amending motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah. I think the motion was brought so we didn't have ten thousand go into the B I A, and then maybe some go into the Kinsman through the grant program, so, yeah. Councillor Promansky, you got a question?
Thank you, through the mayor, um, how will this affect the community of grants, uh, you know, budget, so to speak, because we're kind of going off program here, and then we'll have that ten thousand that may come out of the community grants budget that would be pulled from another avenue, and how do we fix it in the end?
Is Danielle still here?
Yes, Danielle and Anne are still there, I, I believe the funding source was different for this ten thousand dollars, it was not coming from the community grants budget, in which case we would assume um, that still remains the case, but Danielle, do you want to, uh, to chime in on that?
Sorry, I'm clicking all my buttons, I apologize. Um, I don't actually have the funding source, because this didn't relate necessarily to recreation parks, I'm not sure if Ms. Victor has the funding source for the original motion, but I don't.
You have Sean McCauley on, perhaps, I'll ask him then to.
I think the original motion, the funding was just coming from the tax base.
I believe so.
Right, and so that's. Right? And so that's what you're proposing.
Sean?
Uh, thank you, uh, and Mayor through you to all of council. Um, I don't, I don't have a, a good answer on, on where the funding source was going to be on, on the ten thousand, if that's the question.
I think it was just general revenue, like taxes.
Yeah, through to them, through to the mayor, it was from taxes. And so you'll see that if the council, if this motion is successful, you'll see that, uh, through the budget adjustments applied as a reduction coming to you in April.
Right. And then Counselor Hughes just asked, and maybe Danielle, you have the, the information. What is the budget currently for the Community Events Grant? I know it's based like fifty-some cents per resident. I can't remember, but it's a population base. But what's the budget for this year?
Um, so the, through the, through the mayor to yourself, um, it is the based on a, on a pot of money for all of the grant funding and it's based on a per capita. Currently in the, in the, in the grouping for the community events, we have about seventy-seven thousand this year.
Seventy-seven thousand. And you're saying it hasn't been used up?
It's been the last few years, especially post-pandemic, we have had some capacity within that grant, um, dollar value to be able to, uh, allocate to all grants and still have an opportunity, um, to, to explore other grants. And again, that is all under the purview of C S A C.
Right. Okay. That's your question?
Yeah. Could we actually just, and say, amend the funding source to the Community Events Grant? As well, before this goes on to debate. Right now it's taxes, if it were to do it, and I want to change it to the pot of seventy-seven thousand. Yeah, for ten thousand each year.
Right. What are you saying, Counselor?
For three years, for three years. So we agreed to give them ten thousand dollars for three years to be funded from the Community Events Grant Funding.
We want to make sure we have the right motion on the floor. Is that what you want?
Yeah, let me just.
So, so could we take a couple of minutes just to do a quick check? I just want to make sure that, I mean, obviously, normally the, the events are approved by committee, but it's a committee of councils. So there should be no reason that you, you can't do that. Um, but if you'll give us a couple of minutes just to play with the wording?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. It's two eleven. It's two fifteen. Good. Okay. Yeah, it's a lot longer now. That's correct. Thank you. Counselor McKay?
But he was able to help you?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that I've accepted from Counselor Kilik. This on the screen is what Counselor, uh, Hughes is proposing to amend it by. So I'll accept that amending motion. Go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
That the main motion should be amended to add the following at the end and instead be provided at the Kinsman Association to be funded from the Community Events Grant for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six and requiring Kinsman to sign an agreement complying with the Community Event Grant Requirements.
All right. Any opening comments on your amending motion?
So just so, I'll just explain specifically the three parameters I have in there. So the first thing is that instead of giving it to the Downtown Association, we'll be giving it to the Kinsman, who are now putting it on. Um, it is going to come from the Community Events Grant Funding as opposed to from the tax base. So it will not require any, it will have a decrease in our taxes from what we saw in December. And it's clear that with seventy-seven thousand currently in the reserve available, plus money coming in each year, that it will not really take away from the ability for other communities, uh, organizations to also put on events. So we have the money available. So that would be where it comes from, the different funding source. And the third thing is that they sign an agreement saying that the standards that would be applied for the Community Service, Community Events Grants will also be applicable for them. So that while we are giving them this money, it does not preclude them from stuffing to still put in the same amount of information to the city both before and afterwards. Um, but what it does give them is it gives them certainty of how much money they have to work with and allows them to start working with that money sooner. So that they're not waiting until summer, when there's harder for people to meet and then trying to scramble in September, as we just experienced. But rather they can start now and get everything rolling smoothly. They already, Kinsman's already doing the rodeo and so, and, and then they're going to be doing this the other half of the year. So when I look at this, I'm just like, let's try to let them have some kind of certainty in what they have for funding and give them the amount of time necessary so they can put on a successful event without being burnt out from trying to do this. And when I look at the requirement saying, let's transfer it from downtown to the Kinsman. To me, it's actually pretty straightforward. We were prepared to give it to the organization of the time that we thought was going to be doing the Snowflake Festival. And since that time, we've had realized that the Kinsman stepped up to the plate very graciously and offered to do this. And all we're doing is saying that the amount of money that we would have given to Downtown Association to put on this event, we will give to them to ensure they have the same fairness. And they have certainty they can begin and get the ground running now to make this event successful. So that's all there is to it. It's not going to increase the taxes. It's coming from a grant that fund that has sufficient money definitely to be able to provide for this. They will still be required to follow all the same grant requirements, including financial reporting afterwards to make sure we have it. They have been having a track record of being successful and they have stepped up to the plate to take over this. So that I'm just suggesting that we just instead of making them wait until May or June, before they actually get a final answer, just tell them now how much they have and, and not have to say that they deserve something less or different than what we were prepared to give to a different organization just months ago to put on the same event. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Jolly?
Thank you. Um, we are in the weeds. Um, I'm not sure who recalls what it was like when groups would constantly approach council for, um, or members of council would, would constantly propose one-off exceptions to grant policy. Um, but I remember both as a member of the public and as a volunteer on the Community Services Advisory Board at the time. Um, I know it feels good to be the good guy, um, and give money directly to all the amazing groups who do good work in St. Albert, including, uh, Kinsman. But bypassing policy to be the good guy means that we continually risk getting deeper and deeper into the weeds. And we're encouraging others, you know, both, um, groups looking for money and, you know, potential council, um, members to, um, really take advantage of the wonderful feeling we all get when we, we support these types of projects, um. You know, unintended consequences is something we talk about a lot and it, it absolutely applies here. Um, for the sake of good governance, um, I encourage everyone to, um, let the Kinsman apply for this grant. Um, this is why we spend time to recruit volunteers on the C S A C. Um, this is why we spent time, um, modifying our policies so groups like these can be eligible for, for this grant. You know, I, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jolly. Counselor Kilik, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, when this first came forward, one, one of the if first came forward for the Kinsman to take this over, um, the, there, there were two big hurdles. Uh, one was that they were very concerned that they couldn't apply for two grants. Um, and that was cleared up by the new granting policy that says they can. And the other one was that they wanted some, uh, they, they wanted an assurance uh, that their funding for this would, would be available. That was really the big hurdle and it took, uh, several of their board meetings, uh, to discuss this. And having two people on the committee, uh, work through it and see the, how much it cost and where the money went. Um, so the certainty of funding was absolutely the linchpin in having them take this over. And this is a community event that, that doesn't, doesn't serve just the downtown business association. So this is actually a better fit. It's a, a much larger community event. Um, and I think giving them the certainty when they're taking it over uh, for the first couple of years, they, they don't know what they don't know. Many people will be there to help them and all the documentation will be sent over. And, um, I've, I've committed to volunteer again. Or I, yeah, I, I, I committed, as Counselor McKay says, is probably double meaning there. Uh, but I committed to help, uh, make this a success for the residents of, uh, St. Albert. And, and so this motion, the way it is currently worded, uh, does give them that absolute certainty for the ten thousand. So, um, originally I, my opening comments of the original motion was about following process. But I think the certainty of giving them the, the, uh, ten thousand for the three years, uh, kind of trumps those other arguments that even myself originally, uh, made. So I'll, I'll be, uh, supporting this and thank you for Counselor Hughes and administration for, uh, quickly, uh, rewording the motion as it's written today, right now.
Counselor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, one of the things that I dislike about motions on the fly is we never really get a, a, uh, a review of the long-term implications of this. And, uh, yeah, it provides certainty, but, uh, to the, to the comment, then why don't you give it to every, uh, organization within the city? And then if they come to a counselor, why don't we give it? Just individually make motions. That's why we have policy. And quite honestly, we amended the policy to give them the right to apply for this particular project. Now what we're doing is we're throwing that out and we're saying to every other, uh, organization that would like just a little extra money to do a very good thing for a community. I just approach a, a counselor and they'll make a motion in chambers during a meeting. And administration will have an opportunity to give any feedback and we'll make a motion. I, I don't think this is good governance. And so, uh, I like the original motion. It was thought through and it served the need. And it allowed, uh, others to apply, but it would still be adjudicated by our, uh, committee that adjudicates all these things. And so there's no one getting a leg up here, but they do have the opportunity to receive the funding they require. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Broadhead. Counselor Brumansky?
Thank you through the mayor to, uh, council and administration. Um, in listening to Counselor Broadhead and Jolly, I do agree that, you know, process is a little bit changed in this. But we in fact voted as a council to give this money for the Snowflake Festival prior. We didn't expect the Downtown Business Association to go and apply for the funding. They just had it, um, where it's a big event and there's a difference between big events that were, last year we were at a risk of it not occurring, which, you know, is, is very, very difficult for St. Albert. So, um, I understand that the, the Kinsman will have to apply again and after three years, you know, due process, by then they'll know what it takes to run a, an event like the, um, you know, like the downtown, well, the Downtown Business Association, I guess, you know, struggled with it in, in some respects too. So I think that we, uh, need to be grateful that the Kinsman is taking over and do anything we can, um, to support them. And, um, I know that they'll do a, a great job. And if they, and if we're telling, asking them a favor and doing it and then saying, but go and apply, it's contradictory as well. So I will support this motion. Thank you.
I'll just, um, seeing no one else wanting to speak, I'll add that the original motion to give the Downtown Business Association the money was because they would not be eligible for the grant. They're not, they're not registered not-for-profit. So I felt that was, um, the only way they could have it. But now that we have a registered not-for-profit that does good work in our community, um, it's not up to council. I think it's up to our Community Service Advisory Committee to adjudicate all the applications against each other. And as I think Counselor Broadhead said earlier, not set precedents today. Um, so I think we need to follow, follow our own policies that we actually amended to make sure that this could happen. Counselor, so Counselor McKay?
Yeah, sorry. I, I felt obligated to, uh, kind of explain my vote. And I, I mean, I've listened to both sides and I'm, I can see both sides. I can see the process and I can see the governance. But I mean, we also have to remember that we have set precedents before. We, we brought in the, um, fireworks, uh, we've brought in, uh, the actual Kinsman Rodeo. We've had, uh, I mean, granted, that's when we established the
In the middle of the meeting.
Grand that allowed us to establish that. So, um, I don't, I, I, I sense that right now this is, this provides surety for three years to a, uh, great, uh, community social club that actually, uh, has stepped up many, many times. And, um, so I, I respect the arguments in relation to governance because I'm really big on process. But I also see this as being, um, more of a one-off, not something that would, uh, come based on, uh, another uh, community, uh, organization approaching a one-off counselor. So I see this more as a Uh, community uh, organization approaching a one off counselor. So I see this more as a um. Uh, a one off and something that we've done before with other events that are important to our community.
Counsel Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments that what happens in this debate and I'll try to be brief about this. Um, first of all, there was nobody that approached me about this motion. Nobody had a conversation. There was no emails. There was no texts. There was nothing. There was neither even a hint. But what we did see was an organization that stepped up when no one else did. And offered to put on a major festival. And their major concern is can we just get funding to know that this can go forward? And we wanted the same funding that was applicable so that the other organization, which would not even had a requirement of having. The SACC reporting that we're putting in here was going to get 10,000 a year to do it. And they're just like, we're going to need that money if you want us to be successful because we're all a bunch of volunteers and we're trying to run other events and we just want to know we have the money. That's what they said in January. And then we had to change the policies that they could even get applicable for that money. And when this came forward as a motion, I thought. And I and I and I thought actually Counsel um. Phil was going to put forward motions. I didn't do anything about it. I assumed it wasn't from a conversation. Again, it was just an assumption of mine. Um, that the money would be transferring from the downtown to the organization that was doing it. So that again, they'd have some kind of a surety of what they're doing for planning. But no one asked me or anyone else I'm aware of to do this. This is about just honoring our commitments and being respectful about the process, which is that an organization stepped up. They are looking for assurances they can have the money they require and we're going to give them the same amount of money that we are going to give to an organization that did not have any reporter requirements to put on the same festival. That is it. So whether you vote in favor of or not, please not accuse people. Of trying to like skip the queue or contacted or do underhanded things because that was not. What happened. And I am deeply insulted. That we can make accusations based on zero pieces of fact. So if we were prepared to give this to the Downtown BIA. With no other requirements available, no reporting requirements. Surely we can give it to the same organization that's going to do this that we know puts out quality events. And it does it very frugally. And puts in the same requirements that we put in for every other organization, but just simply give them the assurance and basically we're just grandfathering them in for three years. And we have many other grandfathered events that are already put in place as well. So we're just going to add this to the list for three years. That is all that I'm suggesting. So I'm I'm really hoping counsel that we can get the support on this and show that we don't. Just say, go ahead and take it over, but we respect. The communities that are putting in these volunteer hours and saying you have the funding that you're expecting, hit the floor running and go ahead and make this the best event you can. And we should have had that as the original motion and I'm just surprised that was not what was put forward to begin with. Thank you.
I will call the vote.
Uh, point of personal privilege.
Personal privilege, sir.
Could I? Uh, I'd I'd also thank you very much for accepting that. Uh, I'd also just like to state that. No one from the Kinsmen approached me either directly or indirectly or anything like that. Uh, had they approached me, I would have recused myself from this vote. Um, but I I just clearly for the record also want to clarify that no one had approached me. Uh, relative to this funding discussion or decision that we're about to make here today.
Thanks for that clarification. And just so you know, you can't recuse yourself unless it's pecuniary. But my advice to all of you is if somebody does approach you. The recommendation is to come and speak to council and address all of us at once. That's generally what I do. Yeah. Uh, I'm now calling for the vote. Counsel Broadhead is a negative. Okay. All right, voting's closed and that passes by majority with Counsel Broadhead and Counsel Jolly opposed fast. The next agenda item was.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Sorry.
Excuse me, Mayor. That was just the amending motion to amend the main motion.
That was an amending motion. That's right. Okay, main motion um, was is now yours, Counsel Kilic. Anything further on this?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you very much for the uh, for the amendments and. No. Nobody approached me on the main motion.
Anyone else on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, Marta. Voting. You got everybody? Counsel Bromansky? Sarah, okay. Voting's closed and. That one passes with Counsel Bromansky and Counsel Jolly opposed. All right, um, the next agenda item was on consent and the motion that passed was as follows. That the CEO be authorized to submit a request to municipal affairs for an extension to the May 1st, 2024 deadline. For the submission of the city's 2023 financial statements and municipal financial uh, information return. There you go. So that one was passed on consent. And now we are on to a brand new bylaw. The Safety Codes Permit Bylaw, um, hopefully three readings and it looks like Adrian, you're going to present this.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, administration is. Uh, hold on. Got too excited about the whole thing.
We're missing a PowerPoint. There we go.
You hear. That's all.
Apologies, I got a little.
That's okay.
I got a little excited about talking about Safety Codes Permit Bylaw.
I know. Um. We've been waiting for months.
Yeah, yeah. It is something that's been a little little while in the making. So again, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Administration is presenting for council's approval. Uh, Safety Codes Permit Bylaw today as was uh, found in your agenda packet.
That's why we have IT right behind us.
There we go.
There we go. Okay.
So, uh, as identified within the agenda report, the purpose of the bylaw is to provide definitions and scope as they pertain to safety codes. Uh, delineate delineate when permits are required. Uh, delineate how applications may be submitted. Identify how permits may be issued, revised, transferred, refused, suspended and canceled. Uh, identify permit holder obligations and timelines. Um, identify prohibited methods of construction and establish enforcement fines and penalties for noncompliance. Uh, so again, as was highlighted within the staff report, um. Administration has seen a growing. Challenge with administering uh, safety codes within the city and that was the genesis for the bylaw. Um, the fines or the penalties were identified within Schedule A. Uh, as shown on the screen and that is the extent of the presentation. That's it.
That was fast. You, um, I'm going to go straight to the. Vibration sheet piling. Um. I don't want to get into the engineering of it, but. Is it that? Isn't that how you you get the piles in? Is it like the pounding?
Uh, so there are several methods of installing sheet piling. Vibratory sheet piling is one that has been identified. As um, having a potential to have. Um. Property impacts beyond the beyond the property lines of the subject site. And um, with St. Albert's underlying. Um. Soil conditions. Uh, you can. You it's it's theoretical that you could cause damages with vibratory sheet piling where you wouldn't do it with just hammering or some other things.
Okay.
So there are other method methods of sheet piling, but vibratory sheet piling is the one that can cause.
So there are all, I guess that's the question. There are are there are alternatives? That are of similar cost?
Uh, they may be slightly, uh, uh, relatively, they're more in cost for sure.
Okay.
Um, but they're also less. Impactful potentially to adjacent properties.
Okay. And you say this is something that exists in Edmonton and Calgary and various other bylaws?
Yeah, so how? How the two big cities um, handle this is through a provision of the safety codes and. Uh, council, they can challenge an applicant to ensure that no damage. Will happen on an adjacent property and it's like, it's a long kind of drawn out dance whereas we are just saying. There's risk here. We don't think it's appropriate in a built environment.
Okay.
Adjacent other.
My only other question is there like a a distance? Like if you're going to be doing this vibration. Sheet piling way out. Where our where our rec center is going to go, for example.
Yeah.
Um, so there's no adjacent properties.
Yeah, so we we did have that discussion um, internally before we went forward with this. And at some point, yes, there is a distance like the first one in.
Yeah.
The distance is probably something that can be managed. Uh, I guess the way that we approached it was. We don't know without doing geotech. On the site and adjacent, whether it's going to be 50 meters, 100 meters, 200 meters, whatever. So we started with zero. And we felt that if somebody wants to use this construction method. Um, usually from pre-app until build, there's. Substantial amount of time where you can. You could justify a method and a distance. And then we could come back in and amend if necessary to establish a.
Okay, so that was my next question. So there is no flexibility within the bylaw for you to approve.
This is zero tolerance.
So if somebody wanted to, let's say the city for building their rec center, putting a pool in or something, um, you would need a council.
Yes, uh, Mayor, it would be uh, either use another alternative method or.
Um, come to council.
Provide us with some some technical rationale as to why it would work and then we can come back and um, provide a distance in the bylaw.
Okay, interesting. Counsel Mackay.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, mine's kind of picking up a little bit in relation to the fact that these bylaws exist in around numerous municipalities. And we're now determining through experience that we need to also implement a bylaw around this. I'm looking at the penalties section that you have up there and the fine of 250 pretty much is for everything other than those identified in the chart. Um, is that like? Per offense, like how how will we determine that? Like, I mean, it's like, okay, so potentially like. Um. Is it first time you were going to give the offense the 250 unless it's what falls within any of those bylaw sections or? Um, because we don't really have. Uh, second offense, third offense, it's just 250 and then. What is this kind of what we're seeing in other municipalities is 250 kind of the standard? And then how do we how do we manage offenses? Continuous that that are happening continuously.
Um, thank you, uh. Counsel Mackay. So uh, so generally the quest, the the fees here are set based on. Ballpark what we see in the region. Um, we did start out with escalators. For multiple offenses and then we decided, no, we'll just. At at this point, let's just start out with a fine amount, a set fine amount. Um, because the idea is really to encourage um, compliance. It's not to really be punitive or super punitive over time. Um, if and the idea is then, so if somebody. Is observed to, you know, have an offense with relation to one of these, hopefully our building inspectors are having conversations with the builders or the industry and saying, hey, this is a problem. And then, you know, next time is here's your. Reminder that this is a problem. And uh, if it escalates from there, it's going to have a cost. And then if it continues, then we have to come back and look at. Additional escalations. But the the whole idea was it, let's start at this point right now, see if we can encourage more compliance. Um, and then. Refine over time.
So just. If I got it, sort of like our some many of our other bylaws in the sense that we'll try education first, then we'll move into penalties. Um. But I mean, I you can always, I guess, issue them a court appearance in relation to, and they would have to go for. You know, for any summary conviction offense and they'd have to go attend a court if it became really egregious. But I'm just wondering. I, to me, these seem pretty light. Um, if we are if for major safety violations, but. Um, if if this is where we're going to start off, I I'm I just wanted to know if it was similar to what's in other jurisdictions in the region.
Yeah, uh, so again, thank you for that point. And again, um. Similar conversations to what we had, whether we were being too heavy or too easygoing. Um, again, we thought this was a a decent balance. Obviously, if you're building a $80 million project, a $500 penalty is absolutely nothing. Um. If you're building your own home and uh, you know, you're contracting that yourself and you're getting these penalties, it it adds up a little bit faster. So we're trying to split that difference and. We did talk about, you know, like commercial or. Um, versus residential, et cetera.
Yeah, okay, because I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, obviously we've had some recent experience with. Stop work orders that have been ignored. I don't think a $250 fine is going to really scare some of those people.
I have, these seem late for Schedule A.
Yeah, I know. I I'm I'm just, I I guess this. I guess the messaging that I'm trying to see and trying to follow is is that right now we don't have something. This is a start of having something because. We've experienced some challenges. Um, if we continue to experience challenges, even though we have this bylaw, then you bring it back and we can revisit the penalty section.
But I, if I could just jump in very quickly, I think it's important that this is not an end unto itself, as was noted uh, by Mr. Slatt, right? This is a tool in the toolbox. There are other. Far more substantive, but also far more labor intensive and then longer term issues. Um, that are available, right? In those cases where there's a complete and utter lack of compliance, it's it becomes less about fines and more about other mechanisms the city has at its disposal.
Where I was going though is we're not talking about somebody who was building a shed or a garage versus somebody who's building a 20 story building. I suppose it could be if someone building a shed was so obtuse as to repeatedly ignored. I don't know. I defer. They wouldn't be using vibrating sheet panels, but they would, I mean, potentially what I'm just saying is is there's there's scale here.
That that's correct, uh, Counsel Mackay, the. In general, the lack of compliance what we've seen is more at a. A significant scale, um, less and less so the one off, um, small players.
I mean, I'm I'm supportive of this because I think it it does provide you that extra tool that you can use. And I think it's important that we've identified. That we never had it and that other municipalities have obviously determined that they needed it as well. So I'm I'm entirely supportive of it. I'm just. You know, wondering whether or not. Or whether or not we'll get compliance, even if we have one, something like this. But. I think I think the first thing is to get it in place and then move on. Anyway, that's not a question. Apology.
You're good. Okay, Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. So back to the vibrations. Um, just to clarify, if this is approved today, it it. It wouldn't apply to kind of DPs that have already been issued. Is that correct?
That is correct, Counsel Jolly.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, and I'm happy to make the motion if you're ready to do that.
Yeah, Counsel Hughes has a quick question, then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I don't know if it's quick or not, but we'll see. Um.
Um, so the only thing I have is, it's it's three thousand flat, right? Like, it's not three thousand a day. Like, let's say that I have a big apartment complex, cuz you said the major players are not the little guys. The bigger problem is the bigger ones. So is it just like? I move everybody in a month early and they face a three thousand dollar fine, or is it three thousand dollars? I didn't remember if it was a day would make a difference to them in some cases, but. Is it a one time or is it cumulative?
That is a per offense penalty.
So could the pure offense be daily if it was considered?
Yeah, so if we, if we went out on site and found. Uh, hypothetical, you know, occupants uh, without final inspection. We could issue penalty and then. Uh, um, a method of remediation or whatever, so they, if the, whether they remove themselves from that property or fix whatever um, outstanding issues. If they don't do that and we come back again next day hypothetically. And they're still there and the things haven't been fixed, then it could be another offense and so forth.
Okay, so you have the latitude with this that you could come back repeatedly and then reissue the fine. I mean, I'm not saying you necessarily want to do it daily, but I don't, that's your problem, not mine. Okay, I guess my major concern is just the same as Counselor McKay, is just, I'm just not sure if it's even enough that it will be a deterrent. Like if, if I'm moving in in an apartment building and I've got. A hundred units that got to move in a month early, that three thousand dollars is not gonna be much of a deterrent for me. So. I know you said we're like starting this off, but I just, why aren't we coming in like really strong out of the gate for, especially for the ones that are the multi-complex?
Um, yes, thank you, uh, Counsel Hughes for the question. So I I guess essentially this is kind of, this is first step as uh. As uh, CEO had mentioned, the the. There are other avenues available to us. Um, they're much more intensive, uh, time wise, resource wise, et cetera. And so this is kind of the first. First tool in the, well, second tool in the toolkit, the first is to, you know, talk to them about it um, and try to get compliance that way, but this is. Um, kind of a. A hierarchy of. In enforcement, yeah.
Okay, like the Gutterman scale. You can look that up later, you'll understand.
Yeah.
Um, okay, cuz that's just the only thing I'm just trying to figure out is if, cuz I look at the fact that we had vacant lots, for example, and we increased the taxation on the vacant lots, but it really hasn't made a difference in the number of lots that got developed. So I'm not sure if we do this, and again, it's not high enough that it's gonna actually make a difference if it's actually gonna be a tool that we can use, or if it's just a very small hammer. On a very large building, in which case it does kind of dance, it annoys people. So, um. I mean, we can go forward with it as is, but I'm, I'm just saying, if you want to come back later and tell us that you need to have it at a higher level for major complexes, I would understand. Okay.
By the way, Counsel Hughes, the lots up in Aaron Ridge are almost all full now. Yep, drive by all the time. All right, Counsel Jolly, you wanted to make the motion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
That by law ten twenty twenty four, safety codes permit by law, be read a first time.
All right, I'll accept that. Any opening comments?
Nope.
It's got a debate we needed. Anyone else? All right, call for the vote. Okay, voting is closed and that motion passes unanimously. Second reading?
That by law ten twenty twenty four be read a second time.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that's unanimous. Counsel Bermansky, do you feel like making unanimous consent? I gotta look this way. Poor Shelley's all by herself over here.
That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of by law ten slash twenty twenty four.
Awesome, thank you. Call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that is unanimous, so we can go to third and final reading, Counsel Jolly.
That by law ten twenty twenty four be read a third time.
Right, call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that passes unanimously. I was just laughing at the, those two online cuz they have to unclick and re-click their little. But good job, guys. We are through that one. Eight point one, there was no emergent items. We do have two council motions today, so ten point one was from Counselor Kilik. Variable wa- uh, wastewater rates, I'll have you read it in.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, that the variable wastewater rate that is based on eighty percent of the metered. Water consumption for residential customers be eliminated in favor of a variable wastewater rates that are based on one hundred percent. Of metered consumption for all customers that receive both. These utility services with this charge incorporated into twenty twenty four budget planning and implemented in twenty twenty five.
All right, before I accept it, I'll open it up for questions. Does any member of council have a question? Counsel Jolly?
Yeah, so I, this might be maybe first to Counselor Kilik, and you know, if you're gonna do this in in debate, please, you know, please skip the answer, um, but. Um, to me, this sounds like a, just a make-work project, so I guess what what problem are we trying to solve through this?
Well, it was brought up by administration, uh, when we did our budget uh, discussions and. Uh, no one could explain why we had selected the twenty percent, and I think it was said the, uh, I can't remember the exact quote, I apologize, uh. You know, before I say something that administration didn't say, but it was simply, this is uh, a non-standard. Practice and no one could answer why uh, we had chosen to go to the. You know, the eighty percent at a higher rate, it seemed to be an arbitrary number. So. When I heard that, it seemed like this would be an opportunity to clarify that.
So, sorry, I I'm not sure, I may not phrase my question properly, so. Um, so I understand that this is kind of an arbitrary, kind of weird system that we have in place, but um, i- is there a problem? Because.
Like, problem are you trying to solve?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Uh, well, I think it's an administrative uh, challenge, or not problem. But when, the problem is when I have been asked uh, by residents to explain. Why their rate is higher than a commercial rate. And I have to get into a complex discussion that says, well, we charge you only for eighty percent of what. You use because some of you may wash your motorhome on the street. Or, and then they say, well, I didn't, don't do that. And I say, well, you may water your garden and, well, I don't do that. Oh, well, you may wash your car. Oh, I don't do that. And and it's explaining to them, why did we come up with a higher rate? Based on eighty percent of their metered usage coming in. That it all circles back around to. We charge you based on the water that you use, which is metered at a hundred percent, when we go back to. Uh, provide it, uh, charging them for for waste treatment. So it it becomes a very complex discussion. That when I try and explain it to residents, their kind of eyes glaze over and. Uh, again, when I get back to the root cause, it's, we don't make money, we charge. We are charged by Arrow Utilities to treat a hundred percent of what they use, so. My simple thinking is hundred percent in, hundred percent out, easy discussion, and in the. That would be a much easier discussion with residents than trying to explain this eighty arbitrary twenty at a higher rate kind of discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I might have another question for admin, but I'm gonna think about it.
Okay, yeah, there's a couple more. So, uh, Counsel Kukak, you have a question? Or is that just to make the motion?
I I did just want to confirm the simple math because I think, again, there there was some. And maybe some other counselors will ask this question, but I just wanted to confirm the simple math was that today. We are charging an uh, an arbitrary rate of three dollars and fourteen cents, and this is in the backgrounder. And if I use simple math, just to say we're using ten cubic meters, I like using ten cuz it's an easy to do with the math. And then saying that we charge you eighty percent of that ten cubic meters that you're gonna use. So then I take eight times three dollars and fourteen cents, I come out with twenty five dollars and and twelve. Cents would be your bill for wastewater. Now, if we go to the proposed rate where we charge for one hundred percent, that's. Proposed at two dollars and fifty one times ten, which is a full amount that you're using, you come back out to the same number. Twenty five, twelve, so net effect is no one's rates are going, the the total bill that they pay is not. Going up, we're just simply measuring it in and we're paying it out on the same amount that we we pay for air utilities. Question is, we don't make, by this rate change, we don't make. Residents pay any more money or we don't recover more money. Um, this is a a break even proposition, just to confirm that my understanding is correct.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel. We do have our senior manager utilities, I'll defer to him. I I just, if I could maybe make one point. The the rate is not arbitrary, the rate is actually engineered based on the eighty twenty split, so it's not an arbitrary rate per se, the eighty twenty certainly you could argue over time. Right, uh, that split, I just wanted to be very clear about the rate.
Yeah.
Is not arbitrary, um, Regan?
And and I guess just added that there may have been a lot of science that went into how that eighty percent was calculated as well. We don't have tho- those records, we don't have that history. Uh, as to as to where they landed on eighty percent. I think Sturgeon County, it's at eighty four percent, and Strathcona County, it's ninety two and a half percent. And the remaining municipalities in the region, it's 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 based on a hundred percent.
And and so to your question, that is correct, that the rate payer would see essentially the same bill regardless.
Uh, thank you, and I, the the small analysis I did, I saw that Red Deer is at ninety percent, so they're they're all different. Numbers, and I I apologize for using the term arbitrary, it was, maybe there was. Some science back in the day, but we've kind of lost what that was, so, uh, uh, thank you, but confirmation that. What people pay is not going to change at the end of the day is uh, is perfect clarification. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, I just to confirm, uh. I. What Counselor Kilik in the previous discussion is is my understanding. My question is, is that. Is the motion as it's currently written, is that clear? What I don't want to see happen is it go up to a hundred percent? And the three uh, fourteen be maintained? Maybe a question of of legal, it is, is it clear that it goes back to a hundred percent, but back to the. Two fifty one per cubic meter for residential rates? Is the motion clear?
That is absolutely understanding, Counselor, yes.
But it's a good question, you know, if somebody was to read that motion. Five years from now. Do you want something in there that says that? The rate is the same for everyone?
Well, I I, my question is, is is, it might be clear to us, but to your point is five years from now, I mean, we we can't understand why it came to eighty percent now. Because we don't have records. I'm just saying that whatever we say today should be clear, what we're saying uh, for future reference.
I I I guess.
Yeah, cuz the motion talks about all cons- customers that receive both of these utility services, so when you say both. I think you meant. Water and wastewater, okay, thanks, okay.
Uh, maybe I could ask Regan just to confirm, but certainly our our interpretation, understanding of the motion, if you want to.
Yeah, I I get, I get.
Is what absolutely, um, that it would be the exact same rate sort of across the board, the city, based on a hundred percent of the usage, Regan?
Through the chaired council abroad, that that is correct. I I didn't want to to, I guess, get too detailed in the explanation because there may come a time. Where we want to have a different rate for residential versus commercial industrial, right? There there, there's talk of arrow utilities. Charging a surcharge based on uh, on I and I. And and if they were to implement that surcharge, it may affect residential customers differently than than commercial industrial customers, so. So I I want, I still want to provide some flexibility, but the clarity is there, we would, we would reduce the residential rate by by twenty five percent. And and in conjunction with with the budget would would be the expectation.
Are you happy with that, Counsel Broadhead?
Hey, I'm just, if it's clear in in everybody else's mind, then uh, then that's fine by me.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Counsel Bermansky and then Counsel Jolly.
Thank you to administration. I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but the municipalities that have the eighty four or the ninety two. Do they actually calculate it the same way where their rates balance out, or do residents actually pay less than non-residents?
Through the chair, I would, I would, I would have to look at that. I I I didn't look at that in detail, so I would have to, I would have to come back to you with that information if I don't have that on hand right now, so.
Do you need that to make your vote today?
Well, I'm uh, here, it's not clear. I mean, I would like to see the the new rate in the motion as well, but um, if we're. If we're, some municipalities are in fact charging people for less than a hundred percent and they're saving compared to non-residents, it's a big difference, right? So. That's um, I would like to know that information.
If I could, the rate changes annually, so we we would certainly not recommend putting it in the motion itself, that's approved through the uh, the annual cycle.
Yeah, we've proved that at budget, yeah. So for the two thousand, for this calendar year, it would be two fifty one.
I I guess I, if if I could suggest that could be part of the discussion at budget, we we could bring it up at that time, and that can, that could be part of the discussion at at during the budget.
Hey, thank. Okay, Counsel Jolly?
Thank you. So this this is probably to you, Mr. Fletcher. Um, so I understand that this can cause. Um, confusion. I've never had anyone ask me about it in the six and a half years that I've been on council. Um, but how much work would it ta- is it going to take to kind of change the math, change the website, do all of that stuff? Because I I guess I'm hearing that staff are really, um, they have a lot on their plates. And and I'm I'm concerned about, you know, adding one more project that we don't really need, um, will have an impact on something else.
Yeah, thank you very much, Counselor. I think perhaps I I would defer to um, Director of Finance to talk specific. My understanding is the actual. Change itself is very limited, it's it's a change in in Tempest, um, the 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 software we use that will enable that. Probably the more heavy lifting component of it would be the communications out to our residents to explain that piece, and that would be very significant in terms of uh. Uh, of that component of it, that would have to be deliberate. Um, and do you want to talk specifically about the uh, the Tempest piece?
Through to Counsel Jolly, um, Bill's correct, or, and it is, there is like some updates to the system and the billing system and the website, like you said, Counsel Jolly. But those are, it's not. A lot of work, like in its doable administrations in favor of the transparency of the rate being clear. And so we can commit to doing that, and so it's not a lot of work it's doing.
So in terms of the comms piece and the resulting kind of concern that's gonna come from the comms piece, um, we're okay with that, like, that's, we're able to shuffle things and and.
Yeah, we did forecast some potential questions and we'll have um, frontline staff educated and have comms communications work with them too, but. We thought that, yeah, it's something we can achieve, so, but great question, thanks for asking.
And Counsel, the comms piece, that, you know, there'll be the initial push, right? And and we will leverage the various media at our disposal. But but this will be something, um, cuz not everybody reads the Gazette or looks at social media or does whatever, that this will probably be a year long sort of slow burn of messaging. Uh, consistently is certainly what we anticipate as folks uh, come to grips with it, but like, again, I think that the heavy lifting upfront is just getting the word in.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Counsel Bermansky, is this a new question? Okay, oh, that's my fault for not taking you down. Counsel Hughes.
Okay, this in theory should be a little quicker. The the one feedback I have had in the past. Has been why are we charging a hundred percent for wastewater when not all of it's going into wastewater, where some people are gardening or watering their lawns and it's not actually going down. The tubes and the pipes to the end, so. When I, and so, and and the explanation at the time was, well, we're only charging you eighty percent. To cover off the fact that in some months you may not be doing full wastewater. And now it's come clear that it didn't really matter if you're charging eighty percent or not, cuz we're charging eighty percent from a higher number. So we have not been then really giving. Um, a lesser amount to recognize the fact that in the summer months, oh, some of the water would actually not be going down the drain. Um, it's it's what I'm trying to figure out is like, I'm gonna look at you, Regan, right now, just because you're here. I I'm I'm just trying to come to terms with that because people thought that we are charging less to recognize the fact that in. to recognize the fact that in the summer months, they might be watering their lawn, et cetera. But we are still charging them for wastewater as if it was going down the drain.
That that is correct, uh, through the Chair to Counselor Hughes. And and the big part of that explanation is we're charged for wastewater treatment based on all the water that we buy. We we don't receive a deduction from air utilities based on the water that's not going into the sanitary sewer system. And so we we have no deduction that we can pass on to customers. Whatever water they purchase and use from us, we charge them for wastewater treatment on on that full amount. Whether and whatever the percentage is, uh, we we have to charge for wastewater treatment and all the water that they purchase from us, because we are charged for wastewater treatment for all the water that we purchase as a municipality.
That may be a calm that we want to put out there to explain to people on an FAQ thing of why are we not giving a credit and explain that that's, we're just doing a direct through billing on this and that we can't because we don't get a credit. Um, just as a suggestion, that's it. Thank you.
Why don't we start metering, metering everyone's sewer?
I I was just gonna say, Regan, you have to meter everything. Regan, there's only, I mean, you would know this. I mean.
You you would know wa- wastewater metering. It's it is, it's come a long way, but it's still not really, it's it's not there for in terms of accuracy. It can't compare to uh to to water metering accuracy. And then then you'd have double metering, so you'd be charging customers twice for 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 the metering. And there's a cost of of metering as well, so.
Sorry, I just meant that as in jest.
Oh, no, oh, I I get that.
And is, am I recognized?
No, because I think I see Council Jolly's hand up. And we're tired of hearing you talk about wastewater.
I'm just gonna suggest that calm thing, because people have questions, and I would answer a lot of them. That's all.
Um, I'll go to Council Jolly, and I'll come back, because you do have your hand. Yep, this is Council McKay.
Okay, last question. Um, to to Mr. Plat Fletcher, is there a reason why Admin didn't bring this forward? If it's something that they want?
I I I think it's something that we support now that it's brought forward. Um, we would not have brought it forward unilaterally.
It's a good one.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, that the transparency is useful, that the work is manageable, so we can absolutely do this, but uh it it wasn't high on the radar of things that we would have brought forward.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Council McKay had now recognized you.
No, and I guess the point was already answered. I guess the the uh question I would only have to Regan is, is was he aware of any way possible that you could actually measure wastewater? Uh, because we actually have to be charged on a hundred percent of the metered water that um that we uh consume. So uh, there's no way of accurately measuring wastewater going to the plant coming from St. Albert or through our stormwater system. So unless you're aware of some mystical magical tool.
No, there are, there are technologies out there, C- Counselor McKay, and and air utilities is actually moving towards some wastewater metering. Um, because they they want to see what the actual peaks are, and that's because of, as you were of infiltration and inflow. Uh, we we see a doubling of 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 wastewater flows when we have major rainfall events. And that's because of all the stormwater and groundwater that enters the sanitary system, and we don't pay for the treatment of of that INI, uh, but we do pay for the treatment of all the water that that we purchase. But uh we and we have to, I mean, we incur the cost of conveyance for all that INI water. Um, but air utilities is trying to get a handle on how big those those flows are during those storm stormwater events. Um, so it the accuracy's come a long way, but it's 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 nowhere near what it is with uh with with water, so.
Good. And quite honestly, Council McKay, when I was on the board from thirteen seventeen, we were talking about the infiltration stuff, like, it's hard. Yeah.
Well, I mean, and how long has council debated whether or not to bring in a stormwater policy?
Yeah.
So I mean, how can you possibly do?
Okay, I'm seeing no more hands up. I'm gonna accept your motion, Council Kilik. Um, anything on debate? Or is it, you're good? You're welcome to. You want to close? Okay, anyone have, Council Bermansky, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I will not be supporting this motion uh just for the fact that I liked that I could tell people they were only being charged. Um, you know, eighty percent of their water, which unfortunately, the price was bumped up. So um, I'd certainly like to see that, you know, our residents are being provided a better deal than um non-residents. And um, if there are communities that are doing, you know, eighty four, ninety two percent, and to justify the the amount of water that doesn't go into the storm by the citizens, I would like to see that still be allowed for St. Albert residents. And once we jump up to a hundred percent, then a hundred percent will stay. And um, so again, uh, there's not enough detail or um yeah, not enough detail for me to vote in favor of this. So, thank you.
All right. Anything to close, Council Kilik?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, so to to minimize the work, uh, would would be uh bringing it in when we do the twenty twenty five uh budget adjustments. So we would be looking at um, some work at that time in any case. Uh, so had we brought it in in twenty twenty four, obviously, that would have been a bunch of work out of cycle, so it would have been incremental work, but um, doing this in twenty twenty five allows it to have the the work minimized. The recommendation was supported as uh doable and making sense by by Admin, so thank you for that. Um, and the key thing is, is that this does not increase what the total amount is paid by residents. They are currently paying eighty percent, uh, but at a higher dollar value. And bringing the rate down uh to the lower dollar value, but still paying it on a hundred percent as we pay arrow utilities for the water we buy versus the water that uh goes in wastewater. It keeps everything even. And uh, and a much cleaner way to to do this, as I think most of our neighboring municipalities uh follow the same rule of uh uh, you know, hundred percent usage and a hundred percent for for wastewater. Uh, we are one of the exceptions, and this will kind of get us out of that uh scenario of being an exception. So I hope uh hope my fellow counselors support this motion.
Call for the vote? Who do you need? You're all good? Okay, uh, voting is closed, and that motion passes by majority with Council Bermansky opposed. Ten point two, small dog area overhead shelter, Council McAlga, get a reader in.
Yeah, that uh permanent overhead shelter with seating, some of the one that's currently in the big dog off-leash area, be installed in the small dog off-leash area of LaCombe Park Lake, uh, LaCombe Lake Park, sorry, in conjunction with the twenty twenty four construction of the remediation of the dog water access, and to be funded from the Dog License Reserve Fund.
All right, before I accept that, any questions from any member of council? Council Jolly?
I have a question too.
Okay. Go ahead, Council Jolly. Yeah, your first.
Yeah, thank you. So to administration, so normally when this kind of comes through the normal bu- budget process, it gets put into like life cycle programs and things like that. How does that work for kind of these one offs? Like, when are we expecting to replace this kind of um amenity and and kind of how does the maintenance work? Which budget does that go into?
Yeah, thank you very much, Counselor. I'll ask Danielle to offer opening comment.
Thank you.
Thanks. Through the Chair to Council Jolly. So once we add an in, an item like this into our inventory, it goes into our permanent inventory, which we do map on GIS as well. And then we work with our colleagues in public operations to build out a recite, um, an asset management program for it and a replacement or maintenance program for it as well. We're still at our infancy in the outdoor recreation and our asset management program and building it up as we move forward.
Okay, so for these two options, do we, do we know uh an expected lifespan of either of them?
Hard to say, but I would guess that if you said on on um um structures like this, I would say between fifteen and twenty years is probably pretty likely as a as our is a reasonable expectation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council McKay.
Yeah, that was a good question, Council Jolly. That was one of mine in relation to how it fits in with ongoing operations, but I mean, I'm looking at the two um alternatives that administration were able to obtain. Is that just, right now they're at fifty percent contingency? Was there other ones that were available, or were these just one at the high end, one at the lower lesser end?
And are they just examples?
Yeah, or are they just examples just for the purposes of the background report? And that you would continue on looking based on what?
Through the Chair to Counselor McKay, I say you're bang on. Those are two examples of the extremes of which we could put on this, on the the location. I would say the similar shelter that's on the big dog park, we do feel it's a little large for the space of the of the small dog park. Um, when you look at LaCombe Lake Dog Park, it's about five hectares and or sorry, five acres in total, uh, which the small dog area is only a half an acre. So it is substantially smaller, and so just wanted to be mindful that our recommendation would be to do something of a smaller nature. And for an example, this is one that we we sourced that's actually at um the skate park or Woodlands Water Plate Park. It's that smaller structure with a bench and a and a small shade shelter over it, and that's more the size we would be looking at, something comparable to that.
So we're looking in anywhere between with the contingency built in, anywhere between thirty six and as going as high as eighty. I mean, I don't know, Madam Mayor, would it work if you said up to amount, or is that just pigeonholing administration into identifying and working within a dog number? So I mean, if I said up to.
Trying to put an amount, but so I'm, and what I'm hearing is they're recommending the smaller shelter.
Yeah, but I mean, that's up to like thirty six, three hundred, and and just like we've heard from administration, we don't we don't know if that's it. So I mean, I mean.
Just give it, instead of saying op- option two, go with a dollar figure.
Yeah, I was just gonna say up to fifty thousand dollars maximum, maximum fifty thousand. Well, maximum, well, you I'd be aiming at the sur figure, but I would, you could, we could say up to forty thousand then, just to round it off.
Sure. Would that work?
That's fine. I mean, obviously, we'll endeavor to keep the costs as low as possible.
You always do.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, if we said option two, which is what you've recommended, we're talking about a smaller shelter. We're not talking about the one particular one there, right? So, but I mean, but I I'm just saying for a workable number, Madam Mayor, you know, they they put in a fifty percent contingency.
From our perspective, forty thousand dollars.
So the second sentence to be funded from the Dog License Reserve could read to be funded um up to forty thousand dollars from the Dog License Reserve.
So, yeah.
Okay, it's your motion. I haven't accepted it.
No, I mean, I I would just think that that would be the better way to be funded up to uh maximum of forty thousand dollars from the Dog License Reserve, something around like that, Marta.
Okay. All right, any more, oh, any more questions from you, Ken? You're good?
No, I I was just trying to give some con- some context between the two.
All right, I see no more questions. So, oh, it's it's on the screen now already, or on our screens. I don't know if Wes and Natalie can see it. There we go. Uh, yeah, so, no, I, no, you don't have to. Uh, everyone can see it, and now I will accept it. So go ahead. It's your, it's now our motion. Go.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Just I'll just an opening comments. I mean, I I mean, this arises out of a of a inquiry we received. There's about uh fifteen to thirty seniors, and I mean seniors like sixty five plus seniors, not fifty five plus seniors like we're hearing lately. And they gather in the park around one thirty every day, rain, shine, snow. Um, and uh ten AM in the summer, and um they've developed into quite the social gathering group. They have dessert potlucks. They have um Tim Horton's coffee, Timbits in the park, uh, and they also have dress up days for their dogs, uh, where they organize little parties such as Halloween. So I mean, last year they had forty dogs and owners attend. And uh, it's become an important uh social gathering place for seniors, and many great relationships have been made, and I've uh my dog unfortunately is a little too big to be participate uh in the uh smaller dog park, but um, what what they've noticed is, is that um, there are a number of residents who attend and have to use uh walkers and canes and um find that it's um, they're just lacking the space and uh the shelter in either hot uh day events or rainy day events or even snowy day events. So um, you know, this came to came to us, and they said there is a similar structure in the large park that does offer some protection, but um, they can't get to it out of their park and into that park fast enough. So they would wonder if there'd be some support from council to add that. And I just don't think that that's too great of an ask to uh support uh not only this group of residents, because this is one we only know about. I'm sure there are many, many others at many different times of the day. Uh, including uh Counselor Kilik, when he's babysitting, uh, his dogs that attend that park regularly. Um, I don't, uh, I mean, I, like I said, so I mean, I I just think this is some a small commitment in relation, and and it, I just see there's a lot of synergy with what's going on in relation to uh already some existing work that it takes onto the park. So I just didn't see that this was just too big of a jump to do both at the same time, particularly with what we're looking at in relation to spending dollars and what we have in the reserve, so.
Oh, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'll be brief. I I think that the thing that hit home to me the most, Council McKay, when you're talking about was accessibility, because a lot of people use the dog parks when they really can't walk their dogs for extended periods of time. And then yet those people would have nowhere to actually rest if they can't also just stand for long periods of time. And a lot of people who are older do like small dogs. I know this. And so that conjunction really is a barrier in some ways, because you can't bring the dog for as long because it can't sit. And so I can see where this would actually have a lot of value for those people. That's it. Thank you.
I see no more members of council registered to speak. Are you okay to go to the voting?
Yeah, no, I don't have nothing to close. Thank you. I just appreciate council's time on this.
Call for the vote? Voting is closed. And that motion passes unanimously. So we are on to uh announcements. IR's notices a motion. I know Council Kilik had a question about the compost depot, so I'll go to you first, Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, question to Mr. Fletcher was just uh the timing or target timing for opening of the Villeneuve Road Compost Depot. Uh, residents have asked, so uh it would be great.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna, I'll steal the thunder of our Director of Public Ops on this one. And sixteenth April uh is the opening for the compost depot uh with leaf pickup scheduled for twenty nine April, end of the month separately.
April, so April sixteenth.
That's correct.
I, uh, when you sent the question, and I did quickly check our website to make sure it's not there, and it's not there, so maybe we need to get it updated. Okay.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you for that, and I I do have an announcement, but we can come back for.
No, go for it. I like announcements.
I, Madam Mayor and administration, uh, I I wish Chief Cook was here, but I I just wanted to really um recognize the great work that the firefighter and emergency services team has done uh since the rooftop uh muscular dystrophy campaign. Um, and Danielle Onis Onis G, uh, I probably did not get that right, and I apologize uh to Danielle, or or uh, so anyway. They did beat Burnaby. Um, apparently, we got the final numbers, and the uh St. Albert residents on uh through hard work of the firefighters raised fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollars and twenty eight cents, uh, which does put us in first place in the country. Uh, so that's a big kudos uh to the to the team as as well as to the residents, obviously, for contributing and the businesses that supported the firefighters uh uh having them uh on onsite. Um, so that's a a big shout out to everyone that that accomplished that on on behalf of muscular dystrophy. I'd also like to just note that I had the pleasure of going down there when they were doing their final day of collecting money at Savon. Uh, I had, I had missed the rooftop event because I was away, so I made sure I went down to the closing, and not only are they giving back to the community by raising funds for muscular dystrophy, but within an hour of the closing off of of that money collecting event, we had a a uh major fire. So the firefighters all and emergency services also responded directly to that community event with the fire up behind Rona. Uh, it could have been a very dangerous situation with uh transformer. So there was electricity involved and water don't go well together. Uh, there was a major fire in a vehicle close to other vehicles that are close to apartment buildings. Um, could have been a a significantly worse event, but our uh our team was there and uh responders from all three stations were were there and had it under control. So in a matter of hours, we had them, had our firefighters serving our community in a volunteer position for muscular dystrophy and an hour. And an hour later, they're responding to a major fire and protecting our, our residents. I can't think of a better uh, example of, uh, how a fire and, and emergency services serves our community than those two examples that happened within an hour of each other. So, uh, big shout out to, to them on behalf of all of council.
Thanks, Vada. I had not heard the numbers, so I will, uh, send them a note too. That's great to hear. Anyone else have any announcements? Notices, emotions? Or BIRs? We're good. And there's none that were sent in, right? Okay, so I'm trying to keep track of them. I need a motion to go in camera for the land matter. So that's a, a new, um, motion. So do we have it up or could we have it up? It's not the, it's not the annual report we're going in for the land matter.
That council moving camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to sections sixteen and twenty-four, one A of the freedom of information.
I'm just making sure those are the right ones because you've got that as hu- human resource annual report.
It's just a tech, it's a technological issue. We can't change it because it was already set in the agenda as.
Okay.
But on the minutes, it'll, it'll appear correctly.
And those are the right sections of weight.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. That's all. All right. Thank you councillor Killick for jumping in. I will call for the motion. Call for the vote, sorry. Voting's closed. And that is unanimous. All right. I don't think we're going to have a public motion after this. Not sure, but, um, could, what? Yeah, we'll take that long to transition. Um, Cheryl, Marta, I, I, I highly doubt we're going to have a motion coming out of twelve point one. But, yeah, so you, so you can record anything, right? Okay. Otherwise I would just write it down. You guys can go home. Yeah.